We have a quorum, so I'm going to begin the meeting here at five thirty with the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've got our new livestream TV here.
Oh, I like that.
I don't like having to look at myself the whole meeting, so I realize what I'm subjecting the rest of you to now. So, well, we'll get started. Everyone's here tonight. As always, we'll start off amendments to agenda. Does anyone have any? Okay, seeing none. Public comment. Do we have any public comment? Going once, going twice, none. Old business? We don't have anything in old business? We're half way through the agenda. Awesome. New business? Jerry? Select Board approval of junkyard permits.
Yes.
Alan, I don't know if you did it on purpose, but it was a very festive color scheme with the shirt and the hat.
So, when I watched these videos last week's meeting, I realized that I did not portray accurately to Jerry what needed to be done. So, I do not have the authority to approve anything with as far as junkyards go. As far as mobile home parks, I do have the authority. So, they're a little, it's quite different. So, what I've done with the junkyards, two people have applied to renew their license, and I'll explain the process. And I do have a paper, a handout from the law. It's a main state law that we have to follow for that. So, what I've done is I've tried to make it so that they get their information back to me in their applications prior to October first. Their license expires October first. So, next year, we should really aim to have a hearing prior to October first. So, I've asked them to give me all their information. In fact, in the application that I've created, it does specify submit completed application prior to having your junkyard inspected by the code officer, but not later than September first. So, that did not happen this year, but hopefully next year it will because, yes.
Is what you just spoke about what's in front of me? What you just said about that, is that in front of me?
Their applications. You have their applications.
Yeah, but the thing that you just said about the deadline, is that?
No, this is a, this is a new, this is a revised application, so we're working on that. The file system at the town office isn't that great, so to find anything that's historic is very difficult. Anyway, so I think that the two people that are renewing understand the process. I believe next year, I hope that they have it to be before September first, so we can do it timely. They want it timely. So, anyway, I have gone to each of the two and inspected them based on the parameters in the application and the law, and they do comply with that. So, I approve of their operation as far as the state law goes. I have no objections to either of those properties. I did make note of some things. One of them has a front fence that is getting a little dilapidated, and I said another year, you know, next year, you want to keep that in mind. You need to keep that fence intact. And I had talked to a previous, one of the other applicants previously this year and said, your stuff is encroaching on the road, and you need to pull it back or shield it. And they did that before I came to inspect, so perfect. Do you, do you guys want these? This is a snippet of what is required.
Yeah, if you could just have Jerry send us a copy of that, and then we can link it into the meeting notes, please.
Yep, and these are, these are highlighted. So, it just talks about the, that you guys issued the permit. You can do it through me, but you guys have to vote. And date of approval is October first, and it does state that a public hearing is optional for renewals. If you want one, you can have one. If you don't want one, you don't have to have one. So, that being said, two applications, I approve. They've, they've done what they need to do to have a legal junkyard in Durham. So, it's really up to you to issue or not issue their license. Do you have any questions about either property?
Any questions for Alan? I like that you're building in a September first deadline. I think future boards, iterations of the board may want a public hearing. So, if those applications are in September first, we can just have on our rolling schedule, two weeks later would be a hearing.
Jerry said that you guys kind of want one this year, but we're going to plan on.
We're a little, yeah, a little behind on this, which is, you know, one thing. But, so, any questions for Alan so far, or any questions about either one of these applications?
Alan, are these the only two junkyards in Durham?
These are the only two licensed junkyards in Durham.
Which is a different.
The butters were notified in local places.
The butters were all notified, and I didn't receive any calls, but they didn't receive any calls.
So, I'd move that we approve the two junkyard permits retroactive to October first, 2024, for one year period.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All right, any additional discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none. All in favor of the motion to approve the junkyard permits retroactive to October first, 2024? Any opposition? Seeing none. And it passes unanimously. Okay.
Awesome. Jerry and I had a brief discussion about some of the places in Durham that may not be licensed, and I have note of several of them. And the process for that is I would pay them a visit. The state law actually stipulates what a junkyard is, and we have several that meet that definition and are not licensed. So, we could definitely give them, I could give them a notice of violation. But right now, that's the only thing that I can do. So, I can give them a notice of violation. That's the date that they've been notified that they're in violation of the ordinance, and then it's really up to the Select Board to take it from there. There are other towns and other policies and ordinances where the code enforcement officer does have authority to issue violations and fines. And I've given you a proposed, a proposed copy of that, which you guys can take and just look at for later date. And I have run that by our attorney. Don't worry, I didn't do it on the town's dime. It was prior to me coming here. So, we discussed that, in fact, that specific ordinance, and she approves of it. But it's a, it's a violation thing, very quick violation that I can present. Yes.
Is that only in terms of a junkyard, or is that, that's regarding every? Thank you.
Any, any violation that happens in the town, I am, you can give me the authority to issue a violation, and that comes with a fine. And just a basic, what I had run by Kristen previously is we had a step system in Mechanic Falls when I was there, and she said, "That's not serious. A big fine right off the bat, three hundred dollars. You're violating the ordinance, the, our law, and you shouldn't be doing that." I generally want people to comply. So, I'll say, "You've got a week. I'm coming back in a week. If you, if you don't have this taken care of, I'm going to issue you a violation." So, I would always do that. But when you issue a violation right off the bat that has money associated with it, they don't like that. And then after that, a hundred dollars a day, immediately, has a big impact, and it makes people change.
So, this seems, thank you for this. It seems like we have two parts here. One part is you know of some existing areas that meet the criteria to being a junkyard that are operating without a permit. Secondly, you have some proposed language that we could utilize to empower you to issue fees. On that first issue, is there anything you need from us direction-wise, or to Jerry direction-wise, to empower you to give that notice of violation?
No. I have several picked out that definitely fall under the category of, and to do that. The only problem is time to do that. So, that is outside of my regular stuff, just to get my regular stuff done. You guys pay me for thirty-four hours a week. I work at least forty hours a week, and I don't get everything done. It's hard to get everything done. So, I'm doing the best I can. When I, I'm going to get on junkyards, I'm going to get on gravel pits. When I can get there. That's very difficult.
Well, to me, the junkyard issue is a big one because there's no likely known violations. And so, it's up to you all to figure out time, taking things off the plate to fit that on the plate. But that's something that is important to me, especially knowing that we just, two people are going through and following all the rules. It kind of rubs me the wrong way when people, people aren't. So, I can't speak for the rest of the board, though, so. But if you could just have Jerry or someone send us those, and we can put those documents on our horizon, that would be awesome.
You just want them, I can get electronic copies.
Electronic would be good because we can link them to the meeting minutes as well.
That way I can read them as I go.
Thank you. Thank you, Alan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alan.
Okay.
Happy holidays.
Jerry, did you have anything you wanted to add on any of that?
Nope.
Okay.
He did a good job explaining it.
Yeah. I was a little shocked when I found we only had two applicants for junkyards. But anyways, alrighty. So, our next order of business tonight is just initial discussions around the 2025 budget. And so, I wanted to start this, and I invited the Budget Committee, and I know some of them are watching from afar, and it's also being recorded. And we have a couple of members present. So, the goal here was just to make sure everyone who is paying attention to the budget has the opportunity to see the process as it begins. We've got some supplemental information submitted here from Jerry as well. But realistically, the big goal for me tonight is for us as a Select Board to kind of vote on some, or make some suggestions to the town manager as the town manager prepares our budget. So, I want to make sure everyone knows that the budget that's prepared by the town manager is a reflection of what the Select Board wants accomplished in the next year. And we just need to give the Select Board, who can then give some direction, the town manager, some direction on the budget priorities or goals and objectives that can then make it down to department heads and things like that. So, you know, I want to start off by opening the discussion around budget priorities. I have some notes here of things that came to my mind. So, we have a lot of moving parts this year, switching over to an eighteen-month budget, switching over to a fiscal year. And so, in my mind, the less we do new, the better, because it can help keep things simple. With that being said, I would like to see us increase our admin capacity to twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty levels, when we used to have four people working behind the counter. Right now, we have three. And so, I'd like to see that brought to twenty twenty levels to provide the capacity we need to deliver what's expected from our town staff right now to the community. I think that we've seen some, some areas where we think we could better serve the town if we brought that back up to the previous levels. The other thing that I'm interested in, in, is discussing our, our personnel line. And I'm interested in talking about supporting a compensation adjustment that aligns with the cost of living and with, that's commensurate with roles and responsibilities. And so, to me, those are the two things that I think are important, but I think that from there on out, nothing new is a really good approach to take because we've got a lot of moving parts. So, does anyone else have anything they want to add to that list before we discuss those two things that I am suggesting? Okay. So, at this point, I would, I'm going to make a motion that we direct the town manager to.
Can I just pause for one second?
Sure.
You just asked that question really fast, and I didn't really have time to process and think about what I wanted to say. I, I agree with this position, but at the same time, I, it's hard for me to say that in a concrete way without hearing from the fire chief, the town manager, and the road commander. If there's like some thing that they need to tell us that we don't know yet, like, like I recognize the things that we know about, but if there's something that's outlined that we don't know about, I feel like I need to know that before I can definitively say.
Yeah, I understand, I understand what you're saying. In terms of new requests, though, or changing things, to add things new, I think that is, I personally feel like it comes from us to say, "Hey, we need this new initiative pursued." But is, are you saying that you want to hear from others to ask if there's anything that they?
Okay, so, thank you for clarifying that. So, in terms of like, if, if chief needed equipment, right? That, that's not necessarily something new. That falls under his, like, operating budget, and then we have that conversation. You're saying like, we're not suggesting funding a transfer station. We're not suggesting funding a new service. You're, okay.
That's my thought process, is that as they go through the process of creating their budgets, they know from us, or creating the budget for us to review, they know from us that this is what the Select Board wants. A baseline budget that includes these adjustments. Or the Select Board wants us to, you know, build something new, which I'm not suggesting we do want that, but it gives them an idea. So, they, because the way I think about it is that policy's coming down from us as to what the goals and objectives are of the community, and they need to build a budget that reflects our policy objectives. And they can't do that if they don't know what our policy objectives are.
So, twenty, sorry, sorry, Josh. Twenty twenty levels of staffing included, that was five days a week?
Yeah.
And, and plus the extended hours that we come, just to clarify that.
Yeah.
I'm all for it. I just wanted to see what we're, what we're thinking of throwing Saturday, which I'm not against either.
Yeah, go ahead, Jerry.
Four days a week.
Four days a week, yeah.
Okay, and, and would we, to the Select Board, would we be willing to add the fifth day? I mean, that's, that's, you know, an upper for Jerry and the staff, but I mean, I think it's something we should consider.
It's something we can discuss.
I know we've heard from folks that, you know, it's not enough with just the four days. So, I agree with the increasing of staff during the current four days. I also agree with adding a fifth day with more staff, if we, if that's really desired. It's something that it would be a goal, I would think, as, as we get, you know, get back to, you know, staffing it back to, you know, so it's open at least five days a week. If not, five and a half days a week.
Josh, did you have something?
Yeah, I just, I, I, I agree that this is stuff that we need to look at, that we need to try to keep a, a budget that's going to stay relatively at the same rates, because other things are changing that we have zero control over. At the same time, though, this is non-binding, and if something comes up, it could be presented.
Yeah.
I, I don't want to cut off ideas that may benefit the town, is what I'm saying.
Absolutely. Yeah, and that was, my goal is that we give some direction tonight. Then Jerry brings a budget that's reflective of the direction that we have given him. And if we don't like the looks of that, we start making reductions, increases, keep it the same. And so, that's why I think that this is a good opportunity for Jerry to get direction from us, as opposed to just saying, "I attend your meetings. I'm guessing this is what you all want," and that, I just, it's not clear communication, so.
I think that's a good idea. I think we need to watch additional money that we expend over and above previous budgets. We need to make sure it has a significant benefit for the townspeople.
Yeah.
And so, if we're going to raise the budget, you know, and I, and I think having that extra person in the office is something that will free up some of Jerry's time for him to do some of the things that we may have been asking him to do that he hasn't had a chance, sort of like Alan said. But also make sure that, you know, the staff can do training, take time off, and there's that level of service.
Human resources.
Because that level of service is something that people have said they want more of. So, you know, I think that's a good idea. But I don't, I don't want new big things, but I also don't want to cut them off if it's going to come at a benefit for the town.
Yeah, I agree. So, Deb, did you have something you wanted to add? So, I'm going to make a motion that we direct the town manager to explore increasing admin capacity to twenty twenty levels and bringing four people behind the counter again. That's my motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Josh is going to second it. So, Jessica, you getting this motion? All right. So, in terms of discussion, yeah, Josh, I think your point is, what we've seen from evaluating over the last year, I think that we're identifying some, some spaces where new tasks have been identified that haven't been done previously under previous administrations in there and under previous staff. And so, I think a lot of those that have been brought to us are things that are actually, could be income generating. You know, finding the, rectifying back taxes, which hasn't been done. And handling training, which can help, or establishing a training program, which can increase efficiency and get more work done. And so, the reason I'm interested in a position like this is I, I bet that there is a way to add this extra capacity and actually see the revenues generated eclipse that of what the extra capacity costs just on back tax collection alone. And so, I want to empower our town manager to work at top of license or work on town manager things, as opposed to work on things that are more aligned with what you would expect with most other administrative roles within a town office. And so, I think that this gives us that opportunity if we approve a position, or at least hear what a position like this would cost and do for our, to our budget, so.
And likely increase efficiency at the department head level, because any admin tasks that you guys are doing could be moved into that. I have a clarifying question. Is it four full-time equivalents, meaning four people at forty hours per week?
Thirty-seven and a half.
Or what we have is a full-time would be thirty-seven and a half, yeah. And so, and then I think too that, that there's the opportunity here to improve the workflow behind the counter. Because right now, I know that a lot of staff working behind the counter, if someone comes in and needs to register a snowmobile or do something else, the tasks that they're working on have to be stopped, and then they have to go address the counter, help the person come back and pick up their task where they just left. So, if we have some capacity there, I'm hoping that it can help have a better experience for the people in the town who are going to the town office for these, these tasks that they need to accomplish. So, Joe?
So, is it, is it actually bumping it to four or four and a half?
It would bring it to four people at thirty-seven point five hours. And so, I think that would still put us in a four-day open schedule, but it would potentially bring us to nine hours or on two of those days, maybe nine and a half on two others, to give a little bit of a later opening on at least one of those days. But I think that this is a good place to start and see what, what Jerry can pull together and what the cost would be. And if we think that that's not enough, we can, we can bump it up. If we think it's too much, we need to go back because at least I think the boards in general wants to keep this budget as flat as possible. Heather?
I would just like to also throw out the idea that perhaps, how well things worked out with Mark as a contractor, that if they're, that just to consider that in terms of, in terms of help. But like, once you nail down what those tasks are that you're really looking to have accomplished, is that something that could be accomplished by a three-month or a six-month contract with someone coming in? Or is that something that, you know, anyway, I just want you to entertain that idea because that did work out really well with Mark, and maybe there's the capacity for that to work this way again.
Okay. Do we have any other discussion on this motion?
So, I'm assuming Mark's still, still here during all this?
Yeah, we, yeah, we have him budgeted for accounting services, so.
Right. Okay, good. So, that, so it really doesn't include Mark as far as his manning plan?
No, no, and I was saying, I was suggesting akin to like the role that Mark provided, but not as a staff person in the office.
It sounds like what you're saying is identify opportunities where a contract could, which is a little separate from the motion we have right now. this is to just ask the town manager to budget for this, so we can see what that, what implication that would have on our budget, and then we will have plenty of opportunity to remove that or modify that based off of what the fiscal, uh, note is, so. Do I have any other discussion on this? All in favor? All opposed, seeing none, passes unanimously. Um, the only other thing I wanted to discuss is, uh, uh, some direction regarding, um, uh, the personnel line for, um, salary. I think cost of living adjustments are important for staff, because it's, uh, just matches inflation, and so I'm gonna make a motion that we ask Jerry to build into his budget um, compensation adjustment that reflects cost of living, uh, adjustment, and is commensurate with roles and responsibilities. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Joe, so, motion by Joe, second by Joe, different Joes, so. Any other, just, any discussion on this? So in my mind, it's just a way that we help make sure that people are compensated in, uh, parallel to what they were compensated with the, the year before. Adjusting for inflation is pretty standard across most businesses, um, in, in good economic times, and I think that it would be appropriate for us to at least start with that as the conversation point for when you bring your first draft of the budget. Again, like everything else we're talking about tonight, that will, um, be something that we can then work off of next, next time when we see the budget, but I wanna give you some direction on where to begin. If we don't like that, and we think it needs to be higher, we can have that conversation again later, but we need someplace to start. Josh?
Uh, I, I'm okay, I mean, understanding that this is, you know, what we wanna see, so we can see an overall budget when it comes in, I don't have a problem with this, but I would like to see different, or not necessarily see different numbers, but have you prepared with different numbers of what, wha- what the cost of each is. So if you start out at four percent, I'd wanna know, you know, three and a half, three, two and a half, so that, um, when we're looking at it, we can ask you, you know, what is this go, what, what is this going to equal, and figure that out. Does that make sense? Uh, just because, uh, you know, we, I think, if memory serves, we, we were generous last year, uh, you know, there are other expenses coming up this year, the school, county budgets have gone up, um, we, one of the things, you know, we hopefully will look into is different ways to raise revenue, but right now, it's, you know, we don't have those commercial opportunities other communities in this area do, um, and so I wanna, you know, I wanna see the numbers, basically, you know, I don't, putting in what you present us is one thing, but I wanna know what other numbers would be so that we can sort of plug and play, if that makes sense.
Yes, do you have a range? Because the way the budget workbook is, I'll put each range in, so I'll be delivering you, if you have three different numbers, I'm gonna bring you three different workbooks.
I mean, I, I will be honest, my range would depend on what the overall budget looks like, so without seeing what it looks like, so I, I would say, for me, I, you know, if you're saying three and a half percent, I'd go down one, up, you know, I'd, you know, it, it depends for me.
If we're aligning with COLA for twenty twenty-five, it's two and a half percent.
Where is it?
Where are you getting that number?
Um, cost of living adjustment, COLA information, SSA. Two thousand twenty-five.
I think MMA puts us, that's social security, I think MMA has different guidance on that.
It's the Northeast Super Price Index is really what you wanna look at.
And I, uh, one thing I was gonna add is, did we, did we wanna pick an upper limit for the overall budget, which then would give everybody some latitude and how different things come in, because, you know, you could, you could increase, I'll say, this, the compensation for folks a little bit more if you were, say, gonna be cutting somewhere else, but if you have an overall goal of, it might be another thing on your, on your, on your list there, Joe.
Nope.
But the overall goal is, you know, say five percent over the next year, and then five percent on top of that for the eighteen month, right? Then you'd, you'd create an upper limit in the aggregate, so that Jerry's got some lead way to, to flex some things in between.
I understand what you're saying, and that's why my motion was to support a compensation adjustment aligned with inflation and commensurate with roles and responsibilities, so Jerry can do, I don't wanna do that math for him, but I understand what you're saying, if, if, if a big budget line comes down five percent, the actual dollars available to move a smaller budget line up could be six percent, and I get what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm getting at.
My hope is just with this motion, is to just say right off the bat, we wanna see, my motion is, and the discussion has gone a little bit different ways, but my motion is for us to say, in this first draft of a budget, please bring forward at least a COLA wi- and then a, a cost of living adjustment, and then, uh, consideration for roles and responsibilities, and then you can, you can bring us forward that based off of what you see in your budget, and that's, and, and from there, we'll, we'll make an adjustment. I understand what you're saying about just saying no increase over this percentage of total budget, but I'd like to just stick, my motion is just to stick on this personnel.
No, I get what you're saying, I just wanted to see if we were gonna go the next step.
Can I respond to that?
Sure.
Just, I, I personally, I mean, maybe I'm the only one, I, I wanna see a budget with what the department heads want, and then we make the tough decisions in paring it down, and so that if something happens during the next year or eighteen months, uh, and, you know, it comes back, well, they wanted it, well, it's us, we couldn't afford it, and so I'd rather us make the decision as to, you know, we get the, the hopes and then we, you know, dash them and hopefully not bring tears.
Se- separate, I think that's a separate discussion than what we have for a motion here about the salary adjustment, so. Um, do we have any more discussion on the motion which is support a compensation adjustment that aligns with cost of living adjustment and commensurate with roles and responsibilities? Okay, seeing no additional conversation, do I vote on the, for, on the motion? One in favor? Any opposition? Okay, to your point, Josh, now, this is, I have nothing else that I wanted to bring up, or I have one thing, but anyways, is there something else, either one of you, because in that discussion, we kinda ranged a little bit, so I wanna make sure we have the opportunity to give some direction here.
So my expectation is that we're getting a budget with, here's what we're, here's what we want, here's why we want it, here's how the benefit to the town. It, it's sort of like the CIP, you know, here's what we want, and, uh, and, and we're paring it down, because
Yeah.
the decision should rest on our shoulders.
Yeah, and so my thought on that is, I feel like as the policymakers, um, we, we kinda need to start this conversation up with some, some direction of, hey, this is, we're, we're have, like, my advice here is, we have a lot going on, and so I don't wanna see a, a lot new, because they're, we're moving to an eighteen-month budget, we're getting ready for a reevaluation, and so that's where my thought process is, is this year saying these two things and then, and, and then nothing else, but if you're saying you want to make sure a department head can say, I wanna go above and beyond and after something, that's a discussion we can have.
Well, none, none of what you've, we've said or voted on limits anybody. I mean, it's, I mean, what I, what I've heard is, this is what we want.
No, it does limit people, because if we, we, we tell Jerry to come up with four people behind the counter, not as many as he wants.
I don't think that's what he's talking about.
So I'm trying to understand what you're saying, yeah.
Man, yeah, uh, let me see, uh.
I think they're trying to say the same thing that I was saying, is that, or was trying to seek clarity on, right, is that I don't work at the fire department, I don't work at public works, I don't work in the town office, so if they need something to do their job effectively, and they wanna put that in the budget at, you know, for us to see, I don't wanna, I don't want them to think that they can't ask for what they need to effectively operate their, their, um, department, right? No new initiatives, okay, with the caveat that if they find that something is necessary for them to efficiently run their department, that, that, that's different. I think you're, I'm trying to think, I'm trying to flush out if we're all saying the same thing. You're saying, don't fund the transfer station, don't.
I think we're saying the same thing, because what I'm saying is, besides these two things that are, are different, bringing the staffing levels back up to twenty twenty, and then giving some guidance on, on salary adjustment, the rest of it is bring us a budget that is the cost of doing business as we provide it now, and so if the cost of doing business as we provide it now is, I need, in order to continue to provide the way we're providing, I need this new widget or this new piece of equipment, that's gonna have to, that, that'll come to us. What we're saying is, don't come, and I'm not suggesting anyone's saying this, what we're saying is, don't come and ask for a, a new, um, fire station or a new public works building, or, or a, 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 to buy fifty acres to store gravel or something, which I'm not saying anyone's asking for, I'm just saying, my recommendation would be to just bring it, bring it in.
So like in other words, you know, Calvin paves two and a half miles of road, you're all good with that, you don't wanna pave four. You don't wanna pave three. You're, you're two and a half miles right now, and you have forty miles of road, put your roads on a twenty-year rotation, they're not gonna last twenty years, so you'll have to keep that in mind as you move on down the road.
I think that's where we're looking for the department heads to have the latitude to say, we really need to do four miles this year.
And, and we're doing, we're, you're proposing an eighteen-month budget, so it should be more than.
It should be more than, yeah, right.
But, I, I understand what you're saying, but, but.
Wait, hold on, let me clear, but in paving, we don't, because the second year, we don't have to pave until after July first, so.
We get that, but it still needs to be in the budget for that next year, let's say, so you're still gonna, eventually you're gonna get there.
That would be in the following budget.
I, I get it, but it's still gonna be, uh, even an increase on the following budget.
So, if, if Calvin, like, if Calvin comes to me and says, well, I heard what they said, I, I wanna do four miles, let's put that in the budget, you're gonna look at it and say, now, let's get that back down to two and a half miles, because it increases the budget?
I'm gonna say that if it keeps up with the schedule, that he needs to make sure the roads are operable, and, uh, you know, if they're safe to drive on. I'm not an expert in that, that's the two of you.
Yeah.
Which is, which is why I don't love this exercise we're doing, because I wanna see the budget, I wanna see what you're recommending, I wanted to explain to me as to why, and I will, I will tell you that my goal is to keep it, I mean, it's gonna go up, I understand that, but I would also like to see some other stuff come down that we can, we can do better. Uh, but we need to run the town, I mean, we're not in the business of making money, we have to provide a service to the townspeople, and we need to do that, and there are certain things, the town office, you know, there, we need, we need help there. Uh, the roads need to be kept up, the fire department needs to be staffed and have the equipment. Those are things that need to happen.
And, and our budget this year was tight, wicked tight, I mean, we've been right down to the wire on the entire budget, and, you know, everything's getting, I'll say, done, but, um, you know, you want, that's just kinda where I'm getting at with, you know, doing an upper limit to make sure there's a, enough money in there, whether it be reserves, recommended reserves from, from, from the, you know, from, for us to utilize, either as the select board or, or you, so that we're not up against the wire, or, especially in this eighteen-month schedule that we're about to jump into, we want some extra money in there for things that come up, and for, for situations that could come up along the way.
What I'm hearing is, are you asking for this budget to have a contingency line?
Absolutely.
Okay, so do you wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we put a contingency. Go ahead.
So, no, we don't wanna do that, because that, because what that does is that, you put a contingency line in your operational budget, that raises the, the overall, so you have fund balance, right, so you can write a warrant article giving you authorization. That way, if you need it, you have it, but you're not raising taxes on residents.
Note that, and we'll wanna bring that up later on in the process.
Yeah, because we do, we do wanna do that, especially with an eighteen-month budget.
Yeah, well, especially with how less than one percentage tight we were this year.
Yeah, we're, yeah, yeah, we're wicked tight, I mean, it's great, it's, it's a great, good story, but it's dangerous, because we could run into a, just a pure cash flow problem.
You don't know what's gonna happen in eighteen months.
Right, right, no, I agree, no, it's, 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 it's not, yeah, we, we gotta really think about this.
Heather?
So I, I just would like to frame this a little bit differently, because I think you're probably hearing mixed messages, right? Part of it kinda sounds like, give us the whole kitchen sink, and then we're gonna dial it all down, so at least from my perspective, I want the information that's as close, that's as tight, I don't know what the right word is that I wanna say right now, um, to be able to provide this level of service that we, we provide now, without compromising what you need to be able to effectively run your departments, but not necessarily this, um, you know, everything in the kitchen sink, because you're hearing that we're gonna dial it back. I, I want like your professional opinions of what you need to do your jobs, but done in a way that I can trust that that, that's what's in front of us, and if we have to make cuts, we have to make those hard decisions, but does that make sense? Am I, is that clear? Okay.
What, what, I think that we're having a little bit of a disagreement is, what I'm saying is, don't bring the kitchen sinks in everybody's wish list, because this is not the year for it, when we're making a switch to a fiscal change, fis- fiscal year, so what I'm saying is, bring us a solid budget that you need to provide, the current services that we're providing the community right now, the only exceptions being increasing some admin capacity, and then with the direction that your salary compensation should meet our previous motion. I'm saying this is not the year for the kitchen sink, because we're going to need to keep it lean, and rather than say, come to our, our committee and give us this massive budget that we might not like, I'm saying, bring to us what you need to do, to do your job. If doing your job does not current, if you, if you don't feel like your budget is currently doing your job, then i- if you say, I think we should be paving ten miles of road a year, that's what my current job should be, bring that to us, but I'm saying, don't bring us the asking for new bells and whistles and widgets and stuff like that, because of the, 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 the situation we're in for setting up an eighteen-month budget. That those further discussions can be hammered out after we get this budget tight, is my, my thought process. And if we get that tight budget and we go, oh, this is a, such a low change or such a low percentage, we want to see more, maybe that's when we go there, but rather than starting big and starting in, I'm saying, bring me a budget that's the cost of doing business as we need it done now, and then we can go from there, so we can choose to add, say, well, we think that you can increase this budget some more. I think that that's an important policy decision, because in the past, I think budgets have been appeared to be, this is the department head's budget, and this, this is the town manager's budget, but ultimately, this is the select board's budget, and we're setting the fiscal policy here, and so that's why, why I'm saying, not to all the bells and whistles in the kitchen sink.
I'd love to hear your opinion on this, and Jerry has, I want, Jerry has something to say, but I would love to hear Debbie's.
Yeah, I'm gonna call people, I'll say.
We don't, we don't budget on what we want, we budget on what we need, so we need to make that clear.
One hundred percent.
That's, that's how that works. You'll never get a budget from us, because we, you know, I'd like to have a new kitchen in the town office, because we don't really have one now, and we have no place to break or anything, we don't, we don't, we don't do that, we we put together a budget that keeps the lights on, keeps the building heated, keeps, making sure we have the paper we need, and all that stuff, so it's, it's not the kitchen sink, it's.
I'm sorry about the way that that came out, I'm trying to articulate what I was saying, and it didn't come out well.
But what I'm saying is, if we're saying that we need them to come in with as tight a budget to baseline as possible, at the same time, then also saying, but come to us with your hopes and your dreams as well. Those are two different things, because that's not a baseline budget, and I'm just suggesting that in this current economic situation, this, this financial change we're making, that this is a year that we should stick closer to baseline.
And typically, in most municipalities, it's the, either the council or the select board that sets the cost of living adjustments. I can give you the cost of living adjustments, and you can do what you want with them, but that's typically how it works. Actually, typically how it works is there's a goal setting that the council and the select board undertake, and they talk about these things, and then deliver that to the manager. You're kinda doing that here in the kinda like, in, in a meeting, which is fine, and I kinda wanna get you used to doing that, maybe next year we can have that. But that's typically how it goes, that's, you know, you drive the purse drags, you have the budget. I mean, I can put whatever, what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna go to a data point, and I'm gonna look at what the cost of living adjustment is for the northeast, and that's what's going in the budget, I can give that to you, and then you can look at it and say, well, up or down? You can go up, you can go down. I really don't wanna put together two or three different budgets for you to look at, so, I mean, I know you wanna look at the numbers, I mean, I suppose I could do it separately, separately, but I mean, you can get a good idea, because going up or down one percent on wages isn't really gonna affect the budget all that much, so, I just, I just put that out there for you all.
Debbie, did you have some?
I'm just with, I think the way you articulated it is good.
When you're saying you, do you mean me or Jerry? When you're saying you, do you mean me or Jerry?
You. When, when we get, when we get it in front of us, it should be as close to the baseline as what you would like to see approved as we can.
Cuz I understand, like, what you were getting at, Joe, earlier was like, do we wanna give them an upper percentage of we, we're okay with a five percent increase in your budget this year, bring it to us, I'm saying let's get as close to a baseline, because we have a lot of moving parts this year for the budget, and this probably isn't the best year to start adding in a lot extra. That's just my personal opinion, and I'm one vote on the board, so if people wanna direct otherwise, we can have that conversation.
I think we, I think we've beat this enough, I think we're gonna get the budget. I also think it's important for you to come and tell us those things, cuz I've been in that town office how many times, and never once thought, hey, there's no place for them to take a break or anything like that. So I think, right, well, I mean, I I never thought of it, but I think that's important for people to know when we're considering things in the future.
Right.
Right.
So I think those are things that need to come out, and they come out at this time, when we're doing this process. So those are the things that I was.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
Um, there's been a lot of conversation around the bandstand.
I was just about to bring that up.
So that's not, I mean, it is, cuz it's buildings, right, but that's the, that's where I'm asking for clarity on whether that type of thing is what you would consider a new initiative.
When it comes to the bandstand. Go ahead.
No, so I think we should look at this, so I can kinda go over it with you, so you should have it in your packet, it is the reserve stuff.
If this wasn't the right time, I apologize.
No, this is, this is, I had it on my list of things to bring up next, so you're in my mind.
Just kinda go with this, so in twenty twenty four, you can see what we funded in the reserves, right, and if you look at twenty twenty five and what I've got plugged in there. Those are just eighteenth month equivalents, right? So, you know, and then the grants thing there, if we have, put six in there, we'll be up to that thirty thousand that we agreed on to keep in there, so if we get grants out of matching, we can pull it from there.
So, so I I just, so this is where I, this is where I was kinda talking about, you know, setting an upper goal, because if this represented, I'll say, a five percent budget in twenty twenty five, then you'd wanna stick five percent above the five percent you already put in for the first twelve months for the six months preceding.
No, this, this represents a set amount, cuz remember, we said ten year plan divided by ten years, so it's a set amount, it's not a percentage amount.
Right, these were the, these were the, Joe, these were the funds that we put in last year in these reserve accounts.
So we just said we were gonna do.
Adding.
Right, just add the six.
We just said we're gonna do two hundred and five thousand a year for public works.
Right.
But that was still a, wasn't a flat line, so you're still gonna see an increase.
Yeah.
No, no, cuz we just took the amount we wanted to put away, we said two hundred and five thousand a year for ten years.
Right, but we also said we were gonna look at that year to year to see.
And they, and they did, and it hadn't, their, their equipment prices really haven't fluctuated that much, so we kept them the same. So, and then down below, you'll see where you usually give uh money to the Durham Youth Baseball and the Scholarship. These sort of things, you're gonna have to decide on, now, for the youth baseball and the snowball club, you already have money in the recreation reserve, so we ought to draw it from there and not raise it again, so it's those sort of things that I want you to look at, and I, I'll give you my recommendation, cuz I don't think you should, you know, if you have recreation reserve, perhaps that's where we should draw the money from to give, if you wanna give it to them, that's your decision. Same thing with the scholarship fund, that's a decision that you all have to make, if you wanna do that. And general assistance, that's, that's mine, but we have to have a little bit of money in there, so that's kinda how that works, and I just want you all just to kinda think about that, and and, you know, I also put up top there the comp plan, so you're gonna have to do a comp plan at some point in the next couple of years, do you wanna start saving for that? Cuz that's gonna cost you some money to do, that's gonna cost you a hundred grand if you get a consultant do it for you. According to George Tabarz, that's what he told me, now, I put the gazebo on there, you do have a buildings reserve, so there's money there, but I put it there just to, just to identify it, so you, it isn't, it is an asset, people are concerned about it. So do you wanna discuss it in this budget or not? And you have time, right, and then you got the modular behind the fire station that just sits there. I don't know what the town wants to do with that, that would be a conversation to get started, cuz it's, and then you got the building in River Park that just sits there.
Yeah, and so for me, Jerry, my thought process.
I don't know what you all wanna do with that.
Is start with the things that we're doing now. This gazebo, modular, and building River Park discussion, those sorts of things, I think are things that we can have after we see the initial. Personally, I think it's something we would wanna have after we see the initial number to say, cuz if, if there's a big increase, because we have increase in county tax, increase in school, I think we need to be mindful of what we're spending money on this year, so I don't wanna just say right now, bring me a, a capital plan that gives us ten grand a year for each one of these things, cuz I think we need to do a little bit of legwork, I think that I would be more comfortable with saying, let's see what the budget looks like close to baseline, and then we can decide from, from there personally. I don't know, I would like to hear everyone else's thoughts, though.
What expenses need to go into the modular or the building at River Park?
Nothing, uh but we do heat it a little bit, which is nothing really in there.
But like every other thing we own, we have.
Building, the building at River Park has electricity tied to it, we cut that, cuz nobody, I don't know what we, I don't know what the town does with it. It sits there, it's like, I mean, picture, picture your personal life, build this building, and you set it on your property, and you just let it sit there and do nothing. So.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think that's.
So for me.
So what do we, so it's just, I'm just sharing that with you, cuz I don't even know, Debbie, I don't even know if you knew about that, right, did you, Debbie? Right, so it's just, it's just getting you thinking about this as we put together budgets.
So, so one of the things I think that would be wise is getting this baseline budget, and then we can talk about these things, but before we start putting money aside, to Josh's point, what are we doing with it now, I think that's a larger conversation, so I think that if we don't have a plan, I would be more comfortable before budgeting for something to s- to put that as a priority for our next year, to say, what do, what is our inventory of our current buildings and land, and what are we using it for, and what should we be using it for, and then we can come up with a budget as opposed to just saying, let's just put money in these funds to create a capital improvement fund for them at this time, without seeing what the current baseline budget's gonna be, that's my thought process.
I think one of the things we need to do is get back to, was it last year, the year before, we had tried to go, I think we made it to the Union Church and Public Works, when we were gonna go visit all of these town buildings. Uh and I think that's something that we need to do, and something I've been meaning to suggest for a while. But the building at River Park, is it something we can run out, I think those are things we can, we have to decide by going there and seeing, and then having a discussion. So I think those are things we need to get back to doing, um but I agree, if there's no, I mean, the electricity expense is something that's already budgeted for. Otherwise, so if there's no expenses now, so I don't think we need to plan them, but what to do with them is a whole other story, and that, you know, is something we can
So.
Decide another time.
The gazebo is something we should do.
Yes, one hundred percent.
There's no question about that, really.
Yeah, one, one hundred percent, I, I one hundred percent agree, we hear feedback about the gazebo, um, but I think that we need to also marry that with the fact that when people get feedback that they want something done, there's a fiscal note attached to that too, and so eh on one hand, you gotta balance that, like, if you want something done with it, and it's gonna be thirty thousand dollars, that's something that you have to pay for or plan for, and I think that, eh my feeling right now is, I wouldn't direct, personally, I'm not suggesting we direct the town manager to pull any budget line together for these, but if we get a budget from him in January, and we feel like there's some wiggle room to start adding those numbers, or make a plan for those, that's where I would be more comfortable commenting on it then.
Just real quick, you have seventy thousand in your buildings reserve, so just, that's just information.
Well, and that's what I'm saying, is after we get a budget from you, if we want to transfer seventy thousand from a building reserve into a gazebo reserve or budget out of that, we can, but, or if we just wanna say, let's do something next year and pay for it out of gaze- building reserves, that's a discussion we can have, but I don't, I don't think that there's a budgeting implication for you right now personally, does any, Deb, do you have any thoughts on that?
I'm with you, I, Jerry, when you're going over this, you would be saying to yourself, I'm not gonna put a budget in there, because we just use reserves, so.
Yeah, right, that's why you see no line, that's why you see no numbers there, but I, but it's a commission that I want you, as the board, to know that exists, that's all.
Joshua, can you go first, and then I'll go?
I, I was just gonna say, the gazebo is in the historic district, and the commission that was in front of us last week, um part of their charge, when work needs to be done, is to help look for ways to raise it, so we should be asking them to help and find ways, I mean, we should have them do what they were tasked to do.
Yeah, I think that's fair.
That's one way to start, and those are the things that are gonna save the taxpayers money and get this done, um so.
I should've wrote down what I was gonna say, cuz now I forgot, hold on, wait a second, just give me one minute. Oh, I think it's the kinda thing that's exactly like, it doesn't necessarily have to go in a budget line, if what your recommendation would be would be to transfer it, but as the board, what I would like to see happen in that situation is what we did with the additional reserves for the Union Church, where we put that out as a warrant article, and the town decides, right? If, so it does become part of the budget, but ultimately, the voters get to decide if they want to have that price tag attached with restoring or whatever needs to happen to the gazebo.
Have this discussion after we get the first draft of the budget, cuz it's a very good point, if we say, to Joe's point, hey, we wanna put something we wanna, you want something done, but it's gonna cost money, or it's gonna come out of these accounts, I think we can do that, but in terms of for Jerry to prepare a budget for us, I don't think he needs anything from us on here right now, other than that, hey, thank you for flagging it and pointing out that we have some.
We also have to get the cost.
Yeah, no, I just, that's all I was gonna say, is that, so like in town buildings budget, you have it there for, say, ten thousand, but that could go up a little if you start including more gazebo type.
And that's something I think we can talk about when we get our first draft.
Nudge up, and yeah, then take it out of the reserves we already have, and then just backfill it with funds moving forward.
Has there been an estimate as to repairs?
Oh. Calvin can answer that.
So I got a recommendation from uh Tia and the Historic Society to, I think, commission, to what name of a contractor, I think several contractors look at it, they all just start looking at it, and go, this is like a giraffe with a sore throat, I mean, everything you're gonna take apart here leads to something else, leads to something else, leads to something else, and they're like, basically, just need to rebuild it, because the, the wood that's here, nothing's original, it's all already been replaced. The numbers I was getting over the summer from a couple of contractors was about fifteen at least, but they didn't wanna do it. So it just got one from, so when Tia recommended a local contractor just the other day, and he said, you're looking at twenty thousand without even that's a drop of a half to twenty grand, just looking at it, he said, so, just letting you know, the only thing salvageable probably is the roof, maybe we could take the roof off and put it back on a new, and whether you call it a gazebo or a bandstand, I guess the difference is the bandstand is higher for elevated performances, um and just so you know, I priced out a new one for about fifteen thousand, that could be set there as a prefab. Now, I understand there are, if you're gonna try to save it from a historical standpoint, it's the only thing that any of them told me they could see that possibly had original, uh was original, maybe some pieces of the roof. So that's just, I'm just providing.
Yeah, no, that's good information to have.
I don't wanna, I'm not making, I'm not trying to advocate for one way or the other, but give me the information.
Thank you, that's good information for us to have, especially given the fact that you're there saying that a lot of it has already been replaced with newer material. Um, my question is, is what you had priced out, was it a replica of what is already there, or was it a new design?
It's like the one that's in Lisbon, it's the one that towns, most towns are using, the ones that are made by elevators. That could be set on the elevated platform and actually be utilized as a bandstand, you have a camera, so.
I think this is getting a little bit into the weeds, but um I think it's important discussion to maybe have during the budget budget cycle later, later on after we get this baseline. Sounds, it sounds like we have a Theseus's ship situation here with the bandstand, or is, if you replace every part, is it still the same thing, I don't know. Um, do you, any other recommendations for um for, for the first draft of the budget? Jerry, was this clear as mud for you?
Yeah, I, I'm good, I'm good.
Can we ask the other department heads?
Um, I was gonna start just with Jerry, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that you have, you feel like they're in the same.
Yeah, sure, um I mean, if your department heads have any feedback for us too, besides cabbage and tomatoes, we'll, we'll take it, so.
So it's called at night, no, I, I think we started, as you probably know, in earnest a month ago with the town manager prepping. So, as far as the fire department, we're, we're trying to do level service for eighteen months, which for us is difficult. Again, with the call line, we're gonna be up more than ten percent this year, so that's what so far we have given to the town manager, and I say we collective of all my officers, the entire department, eh collective effort, so a, a level service for the fire department. And I'll let the town manager present that to you.
And Calvin, did you have anything you wanted to add for us? Well, thanks for doing some of that groundwork on the bandstand gazebo facility center, what we call. Appreciate that, good info to have. Jerry, you need anything else from us to get started with the draft?
No, I think I can.
I think we should talk a little bit about timeline, obviously, we're not gonna meet on um Christmas Eve, at least I won't be here. You're, you're all welcome, you know, I'm sure there'll be someone covering, so, um but other than that, um my hope was that we could get a draft from the town manager for, for our first meeting in, in January, with us giving comments then, and then hopefully finalizing our uh budget, the second meeting in January with the intent of handing it off to the budget committee for the first week of February. I, I vocalized that in an email to the chair of the budget committee, and I um was CC'd on an email that he sent, which is kinda getting the wheels turning on, making sure that they're all aware of that process, so does that sound like a amenable timeline to everybody? Perfect.
I didn't know if you were actually looking for like a localized.
No, no, I'm just asking if anyone, if, I mean, we had talked about this, so I just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page, and uh, I don't think we need to vote on anything there, but other than that, I don't have anything else on this budget discussion to uh, to advise with, so.
Um, when you send it, are you gonna send it ahead of time, like in our packet, so that we can review it ahead of the meeting? Or do, are you, is your plan for us to like see it in the meeting and do it through live?
You'll have plenty of time.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I, I would imagine you might do some homework on the budget before. Cool, all right, and do we have any other new business? I don't have that clock switched, it's only six thirty.
It's all right.
Usually, we're starting, right, um well, knowing the new business, we can move in the manager report?
Uh, I, last week, I don't have nothing major to report this week.
Awesome, um, board member reports, uh I'll just start off, I'm starting to get some, um, hear, hear back from the ag committee folks who are getting their emails logged on, I've heard from at least two of them, um they're uh excited to, to get started, so as they're getting that, they said that it worked, that when they logged, I had sent an email to each one of them individually, just to say, please check, go, you know, once you get your regular e- your town email set up, let me know, and they said that the message that I had sent to the town email to the ag group, as they're all logging in, they're seeing the welcome message, so um I imagine that with the holiday season, we can expect to really start seeing them take some action in January, I've talked to a couple of them, as I've seen them in passing and stuff like that, so it sounds like there's a lot of excitement there. So I just wanted to report back on that. Um, Josh, do you have anything? Mr. Joe Tom.
Nope, I'm good.
I have five things, sorry, I know, it's all, they're all pretty much just statements or questions that could be answered quickly, but I will say for my like the last four meetings, I haven't, because our meetings have gone for so long, so number one, we had the resident um that filed a concern and then emailed, and I don't know what is happening, I don't, I don't.
Yeah, they've received, they've received an email, yeah, and they're, I, we have, I haven't heard anything back, just acknowledging that their concern was heard, we happened to address it mostly at that meeting that they attended anyways.
Okay.
And so they've received an email, and I kinda developed a protocol now, where if we receive anything via email, there's just an email going out saying thank you for your email, it has been received and will be considered, so people get at least like a receipt of acknowledging that it was received, so. We haven't got anything since then, so.
And you're gonna send that out with not necessarily all us, all of us on, so we just know that it's a protocol.
Yes, protocol will just be, I even talked a little bit to Devin to see if we could. Yes, protocol will just be, I even talked a little bit to Devin to see if we could set up an automated message. The only challenge is it would be. You'd set up an automated message for anyone outside of your organization, but then that means anyone who's emailing you gets an automatic message saying, your email's been received, so. Um, that wouldn't be great, cause it's like we get emails from MMA, GP Cog and all that, but.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Um, I went to the Durham Historic District Commission meeting last Thursday. Um, and one of the things that came up was that the workshop that the attorney. Plans to facilitate between the select board and the commission. And I, I thought that we had said that that was gonna happen in January, but I couldn't remember exactly where we landed on that. And I just think it's important to figure out if we had landed on a date, I can't remember what it was, and, and to communicate that to them.
Yeah, I'm not sure what, that we landed on on that. I think we kinda put some sidebars around January to be budget month, but I can't remember exactly.
I thought we had talked about doing it on a Thursday, because there was something else that was hap, I might've made all that up, I don't know, anyway. If, if we can just figure that out and then make sure we communicate that to them. Um, given the information that we got about the bylaws, I think we have to vote on those and I just don't know if that's.
Which bylaws?
The solid.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
I thought we did not have.
No, we don't have to vote on them.
Oh, don't have to.
Yeah, Josh was, Josh, you were correct in your assessment on the bylaws, I was, I was off, but.
Oh, they have to vote.
Yeah, it's so MMA.
They have to vote and sign, I think Jerry, you said the whole group should be signed.
Just to clarify here for folks, MMA has clarified that the, um, the committee and the commissions make their own bylaws and vote on them. We sign on them, that's what Josh had thought, I thought otherwise, we get clearance, Josh's. Go figure, the lawyer had the correct assessment on how it, how it works, so. I'll just defer to you more, Josh.
Um, we talk about the sheets, the closing the loop sheet, you know, we're both kinda, and so.
Mentioned that on mine, um, I can jump in real quick. So, uh, Devin and I have been working on this tracking sheet for us as a board, um, just to put the things that we're working on. And then we went in, we set up some color coding where it's in progress, to be determined, have it set up, so if we have something flagged as important. But we don't have a date set, and automatically it shows up as yellow, you need to set a date, and so the goal for this sheet is just gonna be to. For us to keep track of what we have going on, so like perfect example, like tonight, knowing that we now every September need to approve. These, um, um, junkyard reports, that'll go in there as a line and just say, second meeting is September, every year. We're doing this, so we can have that for planning, um, once we get, Devin and I are just working on it to get it up to date and. Then we can also close the loop and mark a task as complete, and that's just tracking for us, so that doesn't, that, that, that's not telling anyone in the town. Staff how they're supposed to work or anything like that, it's just one of these things that tracks for us rather than like the chicken scratch that I have.
And when you guys get that. Solidified, that's gonna get shared with us, so that my brain can stop holding on to all the tabs.
One hundred percent, and, and, you know, we'll even explore if this lives in a, a public space, so people can see what are open tasks and what are things that we're working on, but. Devin and I are just doing some, um, back and forth right now.
Thank you, I appreciate that. So with that being said, could you please add the violation policy that. Alan proposed tonight to an agenda as soon as possible? And I know as soon as possible might mean a goal, but like, if this is an ordinance and not a policy, I think we need to have that discussion sooner rather than later.
I would, I want us to probably, if you can note this. We're gonna wanna put this on for a, um, trying to think of how my months work, sorry, March or April. Um, you know, or probably March, but it won't be able to, we won't fit it in in January, um. Maybe we'll have a little breathing room after we hand the budget off in February, to do something in February, but, uh, I don't think we're gonna be able to get to it in January.
Okay, so my question on this then is, this says policy, is this, is this something that we can enact by policy? Or does this have to be an ordinance?
I don't know.
That, that's one thing I would like, Josh, do you know?
Probably an ordinance, yeah, or enforcing the ordinance, I would think it's an ordinance.
Yeah, so there would be an ordinance to, if, yeah.
That's why I was saying the date, I don't really wanna wait another year.
Yeah, no, this is why we'll, we'll put it on in February then, yeah. Hand the budget off and then.
Well, this would have budget implications, so you can't just hand the budget off without putting more.
Well, it would have implications for revenue.
Well, CEO duties, it increases duties.
Only if we increase the hours, it would have those implications, yeah.
I mean, it's gonna have, it's gonna have, uh, hours associated with it, so.
So he had said that our attorney has already reviewed and approved this, and this says policy.
Indirectly. For different towns, so you gotta be.
So maybe they have over line ordinance that you can.
Our attorney and make sure she's still okay with it in this day and age versus what she did maybe for Mechanic Falls four years ago.
I guess, so is your question is if, do we need to change the ordinance to empower. The code enforcement officer to be able to issue violations? Or can we just say we're empowering them through just the policy saying, you can issue violation without coming to the select board, is that your question?
My question is, in order to enact this, does it have to be enacted by vote at town meeting to change the ordinance? Or can this be enacted by the select board as policy?
I think that we could go out and enforce, you know, do this ourselves. But we're certainly not qualified to do that, right? The select board's got the power, right? I mean, unless I, unless I misread what Alan was just, uh, uh, saying, is that we have the authority. We'd go after the, any junkyard we want today, we're, we're the power, so we could take that power and pass that off to Alan.
Yeah, and I think that that's what Alan was getting at with the proposal, is that right now he can issue a notice of violation, he can't, um. Issue like a, a fee, that has to come from us, and so I think what he's saying is, if we could empower him to just go say. Here's your fee for not, for operating an unlicensed junkyard and your, and whatever our fee structure is, which we are allowed to adjust. But we have to give Alan that authority that I don't think our ordinance gives him, so I don't know if that is an ordinance change. Or if we have that ability to, but I'd have to check this against our ordinance.
So whenever we put this on the agenda, those details should be part of the discussion.
So that could either be from our lawyer, or we could just read it ourselves and figure out what's going on and then figure that out, so. Let's, uh, can you flag this for like the first February?
And it'll take them more time, so it's gonna be a, it'll, it will affect the budget.
Any, we gotta, and to your point, Joe, to be mindful of that, any thing that we're saying, we think this needs to be done, it's either. Add time or instead of what you're currently doing, and if what you're currently doing is. What needs to be done, that's, that's a further discussion, I think you have a flagging a key consideration there. That was only three.
No, it was five.
That was all five? You don't want a couple more? Well, thank you for those, we, uh.
Let me just make sure I did, I did them all, maybe that was four, hold on, let me just look.
Jessica says it was only four.
It was only four? Hold on, I, you did interrupt me once, so maybe you cut it, maybe you cut off one of my. Okay, the cemetery, the his, uh, Historic District Commission, the bylaws, closing the loops, and the violation policy, that was five.
The cemetery was the, the, the email, the email.
Concern from a resident that I wanted to make sure that we followed up on.
Yeah, that's, that's one that Calvin's gonna determine what the, the budget is for that, and then the town people will vote if we're okay with that at the town meeting.
At some point, we're gonna talk about accepting a new one, is that?
That's, that's what that was, that's what that was.
We get, we, we get the budget from you as to what the mowing and whatever else maintenance will cost.
And so, yeah.
Hopefully zero.
I think that is everything, or is there something else I was gonna say?
That was my five.
Um, oh, speaking of following up, we, uh, we initiated a follow-up with GP Cog. On the, um, assistance to the Historic Commission, Durham Historic District Commission and the reevaluation process. It sounds like right now GP Cog is a little light in expertise on their historic district, um, capacity. With the, in, in line with the architectural survey needs, and so that they would have to build some capacity there and get a little bit more familiar, so. They might have flagged it as something they were gonna do for us in our comp plan, but right now, there, it sounds like they don't have that internal, so that would take a little bit more. Little bit more work. We also heard back from the assessor, um, the assessing company, and it sounds like. The vast majority of what needs to be collected for the architectural survey is collected by that company, and so, um. My recommendation would be that we just wait till that gets done, and then we can mine that data from the three hundred and fifty properties as opposed to. Cause it's like right now, if we, if we come, if we say let's budget ten thousand dollars to go do something in twenty twenty-six that we're gonna get for. Free in twenty twenty-seven, I just don't think it's very fiscally responsible, and so as long as the Durham Historic District Commission is willing to wait, I think that that's mindful.
So is there any thought that we should actually just look at the historic district we have? And just do that right now, that small body of buildings downtown here?
Can I, can I just?
One second, Jerry's good.
Jerry, and then I'd like to go.
This isn't on the agenda.
I was, I was just following up with the information.
I know, but people don't, people will probably wanna hear this conversation.
And so what I'm just saying is, we emailed them and we didn't get any magic one that solves all our problems, but we got. Half of it, so we can put this on at a later agenda, but I just wanted to let you know, I've closed the loop. Jerry and I have closed the loop on that.
I can update what, on one thing with the meeting that I went to, to say that they're making a recommend date. Their plan is to come to the board with a recommendation about the scope, either that area versus what, so.
Have them, they should send that request in soon. Alright, nothing else, Heather, Deb, you got anything on your? Cool. Alright, so, um. What? Uh, anyways, uh, so I would take a motion to approve the consent agenda. Josh and Joe?
I normally read the minutes like really early when I did this, but.
Alright, uh, all approval, uh, vote on the motion to push.
Wow, words, vote to approve the motion, alright, any opposition?
Alright, so upcoming town meetings, town office will be closed on December twenty-fourth and December twenty-fifth for the holidays. The planning board's regular meeting and the battery, battery, energy, storage system workshop will be January eighth, twenty twenty, uh, twenty twenty-five. We're now into twenty twenty-five meetings at the fire station here at six thirty, and then the next select board meeting will be January fourteenth at twenty twenty-five. At the fire station here at six thirty. Um, do we have a need for an executive session? Okay, Jerry, is it, and are we pursuing personnel matters?
It didn't get written in there, but it's four oh five six A.
Oh, no, it's here, four oh five six A, okay, perfect. Do I have a motion to move into executive session? And that's by Joe, uh, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Any opposition, seeing none, we're moving into executive session at six forty-eight.
You signed it already.
I know, why did we start so early? Were we gonna do a different budget way or, when were we started early at Josh?
I, I think when we just suggested moving it, Josh said, could we start at five thirty and I said, sure.
I did.
I think it's because we thought we were gonna do the thing where they present their budgets to us.
I mean, I was expecting a little bit more than that, you know.
Yeah, I think that's why.
And also Lisa was supposed to be in trial this week, but she's not, so.